Yeah. I've had a terrible day today.
Yeah.
Well, sure.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. So. So. Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm not sure. I'm ready to do. So. I'm. I'm ready to do. I'm ready to do this. I'm about to sign. I'm about to. I'm about to sign. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's. It's funny, because it's. I don't think. Um. I know why. I thought it should be a third verse. Yes, it's. Those different tears. I love that, you know. So. I'm sorry. I was gonna say, it's not. It's not like that.
Everybody's having a great old time inside. Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
That's nice.
Our memory verse for the month of November is, "I will give thanks to you, Lord, with all my heart." And we'll tell of your wonderful, I will tell of all your wonderful deeds, Psalm nine one. Let's say that together. "I will give thanks to you, Lord, with all my heart. I will tell of all your wonderful deeds." Psalm nine one. For heaven, your Father, we give you thanks for all your wonderful deeds for us. Especially during this season of thanksgiving. We give you thanks for the bountiful works. We give you thanks for those deeds, those virtues. Especially we thank for Christ the Lord in the behalf of our success. Be with us in the Lord now. Your love for us, Christ, may we pray. Amen. All right. Seven eight five, we praise you. All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. Did we finish chapter eight last week or can't?
Yep, real close.
We did, okay. All right. Um. I looked up the, the city of, uh, Azotus, by the way, that's there in the end of chapter eight, and it no longer exists today. They, it was a, it was a city, it was a coastal city. But it, yeah, it no longer exists today. Um. Their best guess, I forgot what modern city they say, they think it's, it's near, but it was a coastal city. So basically, the spirit is moving powerfully, and it takes Philip from right outside Jerusalem to a coastal city after the baptism of this unit. So, we are on chapter nine. And we're going to see how the Lord is directing his church. In case people get confused and think, oh, it's just the Holy Spirit working, we're gonna see in this chapter, no, it's, the Holy Spirit is working in conjunction with the other two persons of the Trinity, the Father and the Son. Um, and we're going to find out something amazing here. So just kind of the pattern here before we read chapter nine, so Jesus ascends to heaven, the Holy Spirit comes in power upon the apostles, they preach, um, the daily administration of the church, like, so, so the apostles' job is to be preaching the word. There needs to be some mercy work done in the daily administration of the church. The church, then, there's the first, uh, you know, church council, or church congregational meeting, they put forward seven men to be deacons. This is confirmed with the apostles that they lay hands on them, in other words, they ordained them into this, this diaconal office. Um, and so, so far, we have pastors and we have deacons that are in the church. Um, these deacons could be understood, or excuse me, apostles and deacons, these deacons could be understood to be similar to the pastoral office. We do know in, in later places, where like Paul sets up basically pastors as well, so we have these offices instituted in the church. Um, they're not mandatory, I, like, I shouldn't say that, I'm not gonna get into that, but it's a whole can of worms. Um.
What about commanded, they're not commanded?
Well, they're not, like, the pastoral office is, the, the, the diaconal office, under the pastoral office, has historically been in the Lutheran church, um, but not always. So we don't actually have, like, an equivalent in the LCMS today of the diaconal office. Um, now, in the local congregation, we do, that's our elders, right? But, like, we can't call an elder from Holy Trinity to be, to be an elder here and vice versa. Whereas, like, the, what, so when we talk about the diaconal office, because there's just a wide range of what that gets covered, it can get confusing. So there is an ordained diaconal offices, some Lutheran churches still maintain them, church bodies still maintain them, by the way. Um, and it's not to be confused with the deaconess office, which is a mercy work office, which has long historical roots in the Christian church. In fact, Phoebe at the end of Romans is called a deacon. Um, not, not using the female form of that word, by the way, um, the female form of that verb would come, uh, a couple hundred years later, by the way. Uh, not to say that Phoebe is the same as Philip or Stephen either, that's what I'm saying, like, because deacon just means minister. That's why there's such a wide range of this, somebody who performs ministry to somebody, um, or to minister to them. And, and when I say ministry or minister to them, like, take care of someone, not, again, the preaching office. This is why it gets very, very confusing, um, because it's, it's a broad word that gets used in a lot of different contexts. The, a good example, because I like to equate things in analogies so people can understand, our word for love has many, many definitions. I love my wife, my kids, my dog, and food in very different ways, right?
Well, you've got Agapi, you've got Phileas.
Well, we, we translate that into our word for love because our word love incorporates that meaning, that definition. But I'm just saying, like, in the same way, deacon and minister has a wide meaning in both, in, in the Greek languages, in, in the Greek language as well as in the English. So when we talk about it, we have to be, we have to define how we're using the term, otherwise, we can sit there and say, oh, Phoebe's a deacon and Philip's a deacon, therefore, we should ordain women, and we're gonna completely ignore how Paul says, no, don't do that. Right? Um, and, and it's because, again, there's just a wide range of the use of that word, it means a lot of different things depending on the context. Context is key when it comes to translating and understanding things. So, anyway, we have the diaconal office set up, the Holy Spirit is working powerfully through that diaconal office. Stephen is stoned because he preaches Christ crucified, and they lay down the garments at the feet of this gentleman named Paul, or Saul. It's the same name, different languages. Why the P becomes an S, um, excuse me, why the S becomes a P translating it from Hebrew to Greek? Zero clue, all right? I don't know, don't ask me why they do that or why that happens, it just, it does, all right? But this is where we're gonna pick up, so if somebody would like to start reading through chapter nine, I'm gonna grab my copy out of my office, but I'll be, I'll be listening, just in our usual order, Acts, chapter nine.
Then Saul, still breathing threats and murder against the disciples of the Lord, went to the high priest and asked letters from him to the synagogues of Damascus, so that if he found any who were of the way, whether men or women, he might bring them bound to Jerusalem. As he journeyed, he came near Damascus, and suddenly a light shone around him from heaven. Then he fell to the ground and heard a voice saying to him, Saul, Saul, why are you persecuting me? And he said, who are you, Lord? Then the Lord said, I am Jesus whom you are persecuting. It is hard for you to kick against the goat. So he trembling and astonished said, Lord, what do you want me to do? Then the Lord said to him, arise and go into the city, and you will be told what you must do. And the men who journeyed with him stood speechless, hearing the voice but seeing no one. Then Saul arose from the ground, and when his eyes were open, he saw no one. But they led him by the hand and brought him into Damascus, and he was there three days without sight, and neither ate nor drank. Drink, excuse me. And there was a certain disciple of Damascus named Ananias. And to him said the Lord in a vision, Ananias, and he said, behold, I am here, Lord. And the Lord said unto him, arise and go into the street which is called Straight, and inquire in the house of Judas for one called Saul of Tarsus. For behold he prayed, and hath seen in a vision a man named Ananias coming in and putting his hand on him, that he might receive his sight. Then Ananias answered, Lord, I have heard by many of this man how much evil he hath done to thy saints at Jerusalem.
And here he has authority from the chief priests to bind all who call on your name. But the Lord said to him, go, for he is a chosen instrument of mine to carry my name before the Gentiles and kings and the children of Israel. For I will show him how much he must suffer for the sake of my name. So Ananias departed and entered the house, and laying hands on him, he said, brother Saul, the Lord Jesus who appeared to you on the road by which you came hath sent me, so that you may regain your sight and be filled with the Holy Spirit. And immediately something like scales fell from his eyes, and he regained his sight, and then he rose and was baptized, and taking food he was straightened.
Saul spent several days with the disciples in Damascus. At once he began to preach in the synagogues that Jesus is the son of God. All those who heard him were astonished and asked, isn't this the man who raised havoc in Jerusalem among those who called on his name? And hasn't he come here to take them as prisoners to the chief priests? Yet Saul grew more and more powerful and baffled the Jews living in Damascus by proving that Jesus is the Messiah. After many days had gone by, there was a conspiracy among the Jews to kill him. But Saul learned of their plan. Day and night they kept close watch on the city gates in order to kill him. But the followers took him by night and lowered him in a basket through the opening in the wall. When he came to Jerusalem, he tried to join the disciples, but they were all afraid of him, not believing that he really was a disciple. But Barnabas took him and brought him to the apostles. He told them how Saul on his journey had seen the Lord, and that the Lord had spoken to him, how in Damascus he had preached fearlessly in the name of Jesus. So Saul stayed with them and moved freely in Jerusalem, speaking boldly in the name of the Lord. He talked and debated with the Hellenistic Jews, but he tr- um, but they tried to kill him. When the believers learned of this, they took him down to Caesarea and sent him off to Tarsus. Then the church throughout, then the church throughout Judea, Galilee, and Peria enjoyed this time of peace and strength, and living in the fear of the Lord and encouraging, encouraged by the Holy Spirit, it increased in numbers.
Now, as Peter went here and there among them all, he came down also to the saints who lived at Lydia. There he found a man named Corian Ekkus, had written for eight years, who was paralyzed. And Peter said to him, Enys, Jesus Christ heals you, rise and make your bed. And immediately he rose. And all the residents of Lydia and Sharon saw him, and they turned to the Lord. Now there was in Joppa a disciple named Tabitha, which translated means Dorcas. She was full of good works and acts of charity. In those days she became ill and died, and when they had washed her, they laid her in an upper room. Since Lydia was near Joppa, the disciples, hearing that Peter was there, sent two men to him urging him, please come to us without delight. So Peter rose and went with them, and when he arrived, they took him to the upper room. All the widows stood beside him weeping and showing tunics and other garments that Dorcas had made while she was with him. But Peter put them all outside, knelt down and prayed, and turning to the body, he said, Tabitha, arise. And she opened her eyes, and when she saw Peter, she sat up, and he gave her his hand and raised her up. Then calling the saints and the widows, he presented her alive, and it became known throughout all of Joppa, and many believed in the Lord. And he stayed in Joppa for many days with, with one son that had ten.
All right. There's a lot in this chapter. It's, um, Luke is really good setting us up with transitions, right? They brought Stephen on with Philip on, showing the Holy Spirit working through him, Stephen gets, uh, murdered, killed, uh, introduces us to Saul, right? So then it kind of goes back to Philip, uh, him doing stuff, but now we have the conversion of Saul. And this is gonna set us up for when kind of the, you, you say, like, the first part of Acts kind of follows Peter, and then the second part follows Paul, right? Um. Luke is writing, people who wouldn't have known probably who Paul is. There's some letters that Paul has written at this time, already out. Um, everybody knows he's an apostle. They might or might not know his story. Um, don't know about that, but, so. Paul, Saul, Saul, Paul, is bringing out murderous threats against the disciples of the Lord. And he, he is zealous, right? It's, he, he even writes this, you know? Who's more zealous than I, right? Kind of writes, his, his qualifications for, if we were saved by our ancestry, if we were saved by our works, he would be the one that would tick off all the boxes. And he's so zealous for the Lord that he's willing to kill people over it. Now, I think in a lot of ways, one, because we're Christian, but two, we live in post-enlightenment co- uh, contexts where there's very much a, a, um, an emphasis on the private practice of your faith, right? And in response to the thirty years war where, I mean, a lot of young Christian men were killed. The, the enlightenment is in response to holy wars being waged all over Europe. And so the enlightenment sits there and goes, okay, so how do we get these people to stop killing each other? We stop making religion such a big thing in public and it becomes private. And we still have that, I mean, this is why it gets, um, in the Federalist Papers, the separation of church and state, to explain, like, our constitution, and that we don't have a state church, and that we don't, um, promote one religion over another as, as a country, right? And so in our country, you could be Catholic, you could be Baptist, you could be Jewish, it doesn't matter, you're still American, right? And the state is not going to persecute you over these things, right? The, the Federalist Papers were written, I, I, one was written to a, a Jewish congregation, I think one was written to a Baptist congregation explaining this concept. And so for us to sit there and think, you know, oh, murdering people over your faith, right? I mean, that still happens, we still kind of realize that, but, but we recoil against that. I mean. Obviously, I think everybody in this room, maybe, was alive September first, or, excuse me, September eleventh, two thousand one, I don't, I don't know about you.
No, not yet.
All right? Many people in this room saw those planes hit the building, right? And the, the pretext given is that, um, they were waging a holy war on the great sacred.
It was a jihad.
That it was a jihad, right? Jihad just basically means holy war. And. Just, that is so antithetical to our mindset of like, what do you mean, you're killing people in the name of religion, right? That, that's not what civilized people do. Um. And I'm not gonna talk about, you know, the resulting political consequences of that, but, but it is like, we, we, you know, that stuff happens over there, that stuff doesn't happen here. And it, I mean, it was brought to our door, we're like, oh, it can't happen here. Um. But when it comes to the definition of what is an American, as we understand it today, religion is not one of those parts of the equation.
It's, it's important to realize that when it was written, though, religion meant, it meant Christians, Christians had freedom.
Yeah.
The Indians didn't.
Well, Native Americans were not considered American citizens.
Right?
Right? I'm just saying, like, so I'm talking about our, our context today, so you have this post, you, you have this enlightenment document that we have taken and expanded what it means, including a, a further restriction on the relationship between church and state. For example, many states, or the first colonies, had anti blasphemy laws, all right? And some of those laws are still on the books, they've never been officially struck down, they are unenforceable today with how we understand the First Amendment and the free exercise of religion. And the free exercise of religion means that the state cannot prohibit me from exercising my religion as long as I'm harming no one else in the exercise of that religion, right? So I can't murder somebody, I can't even, um, the, the sacrifice of animals really is not in play with any of that as well, because we have animal cruelty laws, right? Um, so, yes, it is, it is different than what it was two hundred and fifty years ago, and I will freely admit that.
And, and I think, I think the problem is, is that when we think of religion, we think of denominations. Religion means you're either a Christian, or you're Muslim, or you're Jewish, or you're.
Yes.
I mean, so, so when we talk about. I mean, so when we talk about freedom of religion, we're talking about that kind of freedom, not just Christianity.
Correct.
Well, we are today. See, at the time, that was written, the country was, what, 97% Protestant Christian, like...
It was, because those were...
2% Catholic, 1% Jewish.
Yes, and that's also because who we didn't count.
Yeah. But I mean, the separation of church and state, that was not, let's separate, let's separate religion from politics. The purpose of that was, let's separate authority and power. We do not want the state controlling the church, and we don't want the church controlling the state.
Correct.
It was never intended to keep Christianity out of Washington.
Correct.
And the states, individual states, had official religions.
Yes.
The people that were running the government were Christians, and it was open. It wasn't just separated that way, which is how we interpret it today.
Correct.
It was always keep the state out of the church, not keep Christianity out of politics. Those are different ideas.
Correct, right?
Interesting in COVID, how at first, some churches were shut down. I mean, in the name of health safety, but you know...
That is a historical debate going centuries, I'm not going to get into it. No, 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 it's fine. I bring this up because I think in a lot of ways, at least for me personally, wanting to kill somebody over religion is not something that I... That's so outside my worldview, right?
Yeah, but that comes with that religion. I mean, we're taught to love one another. So when it comes to, I mean, even though during the Crusades, that somebody got a wild idea that we had to kill everybody that was in the Middle East, that all of this religion. Today, you have one religion at least that it is, if you don't convert, you die.
Yeah.
I think, though, that when it comes to, like, our walk, that there is, there in wise a problem that when you try to pull religion into it, because in that point, there is no sense of freedom, because one form of religion or another binds you to doing something that you may not even want, you wouldn't even think of doing to begin with. Like, for example, the extremist ideas that anyone that doesn't fall in line with what they believe must die. There's no freedom in that, that's not freedom.
No, that's convert or die.
Yeah, brilliant.
And Christians are not exempt from this.
They're not.
Look, I mean, look at Ireland, look at, I mean, Christianity or Christendom as a whole has been just as guilty as everybody else, because when you let the state be in charge of the church, what is going to happen, it's always going to happen.
Well, look at the papacy in the Dark Ages, and the Inquisition and all that.
Yes. So, all I'm trying to say is, this is a common mindset back then. In our context, it seems a little foreign.
And all I was trying to say is, we have to define religion.
Yes.
Because religion, we think of religion differently than a lot of people think of religion. So when... I just want to make sure that we understand that religion is not denominations.
No.
Religion is...
It's whole bodies of faith, of which there are denominations within.
Right.
Well, and it's a mindset, too.
Our societal structure kind of is, if it doesn't hurt me, it doesn't affect me, and do what you want to do. And Saul's was more like, it does affect me, and I'm going to kill you.
Saul wasn't a liberal?
What? What are you talking about? Have you not read First Corinthians 13 that he wrote? Come on!
There was lots of switch.
Okay, so... By the way, we shouldn't think that we're any better than them, because they did this back then, kill people in other ways. In our hearts. So, all right, so he gets this letter. So if you're going as an emissary to someplace else, you have to have some sort of letter of authority, right? To introduce who you are, to state what you're doing there, your purpose, and why you have the power and ability to do that. So he convinces the chief priests, or the high priests, to give him a letter so that he can go to Damascus, to the synagogues there. Now, remember, synagogue is just congregation. But we have to have some sort of way to talk about these groups of people without confusing all the terms all the time. So that if he found any belonging to the Way, men or women, he might bring them bound to Jerusalem, okay? Now, I don't know how they square this with the Roman authorities who are ultimately in charge. I mean, it doesn't wind up happening, so we don't have to figure out the legal ramifications for that. Yes.
Was Damascus part of Israel at that time? I never think of it being part of that. It's like he went out of his zone.
It's 150 miles to Damascus from Jerusalem. I can't imagine it under the state of Kimi. Maybe Roman principality.
It would have been like, it would have been in the same general area, because it's up in Syria. I don't know if they would have had a different Roman governor, what'd you say?
Mine says Roman Damascus. It has little map.
Roman Damascus. Where's Roman Damascus at?
It's part of an area called Abilin.
Well, that's in Kansas.
It's right here.
Oh, hey, look! Anyway. Yeah, so it's a Roman province of Syria.
But it's 150 miles, which means it's possible for Jews to have moved there for work or whatever, and have established congregations.
Correct.
Which would still be under the authority of Jerusalem for religious practice.
Now, okay, we're... We're so off course.
Well, I was just thinking, the how is, if they're Jewish population and they're having congregations that are under Jewish rule, then that would still be underneath the high priests. And that's where it calls authority for the congregation. Because he didn't say he went to Damascus and started searching around. He went to the Jewish congregations.
He'd be going to the Jewish congregations, yeah.
Which would still, in a way, be within the Senate, so to speak.
Well, yeah, because the Jews have authority to exercise church discipline within their church body, or religious body, right? Under Rome, though the Romans, this is Pilate's response to the chief priests when they want to murder Jesus. You know, what's this have to do with me, right? This is a dispute amongst your religion, y'all figure it out, don't involve the Roman authorities. Okay, so, it's called the Way. This is the first term that we get for what is going to be called Christianity. And if you ever get a copy of the Didache, which is the Teaching of the Twelve, it, um... It opens with, there's two Ways, the Way of Life and the Way of Death, right? And the Way of Life is following Christ, and the Way of Death is not following Christ, right? This is why they're called the Way. They're sitting there saying, this is the Way of Life, and you need some sort of term to refer to this group of people. And it's not until later that they're called Christians. Why would the Jews not call them Christians?
How is that, I'm sorry, I'd like to look that up, how is that spelled?
The Didache, D-I-D-A-C-H-E.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just...
No, you're fine, you're fine. Why would they not have called them Christians?
Because the Jews didn't recognize the levity of Christ.
They didn't recognize him as the Christ. So to call them Christians and sit there saying, you're following the Messiah, but we don't think he's the Messiah, right? That'd be like calling the David Koreshians. Well, Christians, honestly. So... Men are women. Notice that, men are women, makes distinction clear. He might bring them bound to Jerusalem. Now, as he went on his way, he approached Damascus, and suddenly a light from heaven flashed around him. So he's almost there, basically, or he's getting close. And a light flashes all around him, and falling to the ground, he heard a voice saying, Saul, Saul, why are you persecuting me? What does this confess about the church?
What do you mean by the church? Jewish church?
The Christian church?
They're persecuting Christ.
They're persecuting Christ. Blessed are you when others revile you and slander you and utter all kinds of horrible things on my account. The church is the body of Christ. Paul makes this clear in his letters, right? The church is the body of Christ. When you attack the church, you are attacking Christ himself. Not, why are you persecuting my followers, but why are you persecuting me? And so if you persecute Christ himself, who are you actually persecuting?
God.
God. So the church is the body of God in the time and space, right? Not in the incarnate way such as Christ the Lord himself, but that you are the messengers of God in your homes, to your neighbors, to your community, to the world. You are salt and light. Salt has to be close by, salt has to touch things to affect them. If people sit there and think, oh, I can be far away because I can be light, no, you got to be salt, too. And if people sit there and think, well, I don't have to care about people who are far away because I'm salt, no, you got to be light as well. And so, um... It confesses that we are in Christ. And he said, who are you, Lord? Now, that's an interesting thing. This is not an expression of faith. He's not calling God, but this is an expression of respect. Now, typically, when Lord is used in New Testament times by Jewish people, it means God. But guess what you call Caesar as well? Guess what you call the Roman governor as well?
Lord.
Lord, because guess what word everybody uses in your culture? Lord, right? This should be like going up to the President of the United States and being like, well, see, president in our context means something different, so I have to call you something else, right? So I'm going to call you Frank, or Jimmy, or some... No, that makes zero sense, you're going to call him president, right?
At least he fell on his face. At least he realized he was in the presence of something greater than him.
Well, mine says that he falls on the ground.
Yeah, I have been fallen, too.
But that could happen just because of being scared, you know, that light
Yeah.
and shutting you down if you can't see.
And he said, who are you, Lord? And he said, so Jesus, I am Jesus whom you are persecuting. Why are you persecuting me? Who are you? I'm Jesus. No, Jesus is supposed to be dead. We killed him, right? But I am Jesus whom you are persecuting. Rise and enter the city, and you will be told what you are to do. Now, interestingly enough, the men around hear the voice. Oh, somebody died. Hear the voice, but they don't see anyone. And the question is, is, did they see the light? The text is somewhat ambiguous. Probably did, light flashed around him, right?
Light may have been what blinded him. You know, welder's light.
Yeah, right.
So they may not have seen the light, because they could still see.
We're not 100% sure, but they hear the voice of God themselves. They hear Jesus himself. So, you're persecuting me, but rise, enter into the city, and you'll be told what you are to do. So Saul rose from the ground, and although his eyes were opened, he saw nothing. They led him by the hand and brought him into Damascus. So, like, the sense from the text is basically like they're about to enter the city. He's going to start going in, you know, first thing, entering the synagogues, finding these people. And before that happens, Jesus shows up and says, I'm glad you're here, change of plans. Three days, he was without sight and did not eat. Well, why is that significant?
Three days for the tomb.
Oh, wow. Man, yeah. And he's like one dead, he can't see and he doesn't eat or drink.
He's probably doing a lot of praying.
Probably doing a lot of praying, probably doing a lot of praying, but it's like he has died. Now, there was a disciple at Damascus named Ananias, and the Lord said to him in a vision, Ananias, and he said, here I am, Lord. Now, this time, Lord means God. And the Lord said to him, rise and go to the street called Straight, and at the house of Judas, look for a man of Tarsus named Saul. For behold, he is praying, and he has seen in a vision a man named Ananias come in and lay his hands on him so that he might regain his sight. Boy, how... Like, this story has so many twists and turns, okay? Things were going well, things were going great. Now Paul's back on the scene, but Paul, something weird happens, and the Lord tells him something's going to happen with him. And then he's blind, and he's in the, he's waiting, and now God is sending this guy named Ananias to come and lay hands on Saul. Why is that important? What happened with the deacons? The apostles laid hands on them in confirmation that this is an extension of the church, and the Holy Spirit worked powerfully through these men in the preaching and the teaching and the calling of all to faith. God has just told Ananias to go ordain Saul. The murderer? I mean, this is Ananias's response, right?
Do I have to?
Lord, I have heard from many about this man, how much evil he has done to your saints at Jerusalem. And here he has authority from the chief priest to blind all who call on your name. Are you insane? Like, I know you're God, but maybe in the ordering of the universe, you missed a small detail about this dude, right?
He's just as liable to kill me as he would anybody else.
Yeah, like, you know, Daniel was arrested and put in the lion's den, you're asking me to walk in freely?
Not asking, telling.
And the Lord said him straight.
You are called to witness Christ to everybody, even people you don't like, even people that want your death and destruction. In fact, probably them more than anybody else. We're not allowed to keep it to ourselves. We're not allowed to make contingencies with God and say, you know what? I'll go and talk with Grandma Schmidt, because she gives me tea and cookies, but this guy over here that wants to punch me in the face for being a Christian? Whoever the Lord puts in your path. Now, I've never had this audible experience like Ananias, right? To directly go to somebody. But the Lord puts people on my path all the time, people who are antagonistic to the church, and people who are open to the message. It's not my job to judge them about whether they are worthy or not to receive the gospel. The parable of the sower makes that very clear. The seed goes out on soil that is prepared and soil that is unprepared. The parable of the sower makes that very clear. The seed goes out on soil that is prepared and soil that is unprepared.
I, I think it's interesting because we don't normally look at it this way, is Ananias was a leader in the Christian church there. But maybe he needed just a little bit more pushing by the Holy Spirit to really be more active. And, and by him doing this, Paul not only is strengthened and Ananias is strengthened too.
And the church, the whole church is strengthened.
That's right.
Right? That. So Judaism was not a proselytizing religion. It didn't go out intentionally trying to make converts. Christianity is and has been since its beginning. We saw this with the preaching and the teaching of the apostles in the temple and about how they cannot uh, obey man when men tell them to stop, but they must obey God and continue to preach the message. And so even in the face of persecution, Christ crucified is still preached to the persecutors. Paul is going to do what Ananias does with the Roman emperor. Right? The whole reason Paul wants to go to Rome is so he can preach Christ crucified to the Roman emperor and hopefully he can believe and then everybody in Rome will become Christians. And Rome means the whole empire. I mean, that's the big goals. Right? And he's arrested for his faith. It's really easy to preach Jesus to people who are nice to you or people open to the message. It's much more intimidating to people who aren't. But it's not us, it's not our job to withhold the message from them.
You gotta plant the seed.
If they're on the path, the seed will be taken away from them, right? If they are the path. But if they are the fertile soil, then they are the fertile soil. But the Lord said to him, go, for he is a chosen instrument of mine to carry my name before the Gentiles and the kings and the children of Israel. For I will show, for I will show him how much he must suffer for the sake of my name. Paul's got a lot. He's got a wife. He's got prestige and honor. He's got power. And he loses it all.
Did you say Paul has a wife?
Yes, it's believed that Paul has a wife. Uh, it is believed his wife leaves him over the faith. That's not in scripture, it's just church tradition.
Probably didn't leave him over the faith, probably left him over the power and everything else they had.
I don't know about that. I'm just.
Do you know?
Yeah. So, um. On the surface, Paul does not look like the person that God would want to use. Why not use Peter? Or James? Matthew? Why not use somebody who's already an apostle?
This is a statement though, from God.
It is a statement.
Paul is hierarchy Jewish, thank.
It is that God uses sinners. And he will take even his enemies and use them as he will. Um, Luther says this. Here Luke describes the sins of Saint Paul, and two in particular. First, that he was a murderer and has shed blood. Threats such as Paul had made were in and of themselves great sins against the fifth commandment, just as when someone assaults his neighbor and murders him. But it is a much greater sin yet to murder Christians and spill the blood of saints as Paul has done here. And truth, it is an exceedingly great, terrible and damnable sin. But Paul's second sin is far higher and greater than murder and bloodshed. Namely, that he also abused and blasphemed the name of the Lord, and that was not only for himself and his person. He was not satisfied with his own sins committed against God in his word, rather he provoked and compelled other people to take part so that they had to blaspheme and abuse God along with him. And whoever refused to do it in itself held fast to the word, he recorded in a register, both men and women submitting the register to the court. He formally indicted them and urgently pressed to have them sentenced and killed. He breathed threats and was utterly furious with rage against Christians. He said that Christ was a criminal who had taught seditiously against God's ordinances. And accordingly, he was rightly and justly sentenced, sentenced and condemned by the proper authorities to be nailed to the cross. Thus Paul, with his blasphemous words, deterred all kinds of people from believing in the crucified Christ or regarding him as the true Messiah. My chosen instrument. You are God's chosen instrument. You're not greater or less than any of the apostles. You're not more holy or less holy than them. You're justified by the same Lord. You're called by the same God. Now, you might not be walking through and curing people of epilepsy or bringing, um, Dorcas back to life anytime soon. But you are still preaching and living out the word of God as all Christians are supposed to do. And so, just real fast, oh. Choir leaving threw me off. I thought we had less time. No, you're fine. So Ananias departed and entered the house and laying his hands on him. He said, brother Saul. Brother Saul? That's a bit change of tune, isn't it?
Yeah, the awful money just said.
Right? Brother Saul, the Lord Jesus, who appeared to you on the road by which you came, has sent me so that you may regain your sight and be filled with the Holy Spirit. And immediately something like scales fell from his eyes and he regained his sight. Then he rose and was baptized and taking food, he was strengthened. Contacts are biblical. That's a joke. Contacts are going, I, I didn't know if you guys even heard me. There was no reaction.
I thought they were talking about contacts like one to another.
So. He gets ordained, then he's baptized. What's the usual order? Baptism then ordination, right? But, um, Ananias clearly says, hey, listen, Jesus sent me here. Um. That you may regain your sight and be filled with the Holy Spirit. That you may believe. Now Saul is being put up in a guy's house who's going to be friendly to Saul. I mean, Ananias is like, Saul might change his mind, but this dude might not. But still he goes in, he trusts in the Lord, right? He trusts in the Lord and then the scales fall from Paul's eyes and he's able to see. He's able to see rightly. The difference between a believer and a non-believer is the ability to see rightly. Non-believers can be civilly righteous. But they cannot be righteous in the sight of God. And that is a difference. Right? This is why being good doesn't get us into heaven. There's lots of quote-unquote good people, but what does scripture say? No one is good, not one. Because civil righteousness, being a good parent, being a good citizen, being a good employee, being a good boss, being a good person doesn't get you into heaven. Because if that gets you into heaven, then there's no point of Jesus dying. God is a malicious father if he executed his son and you could do the work yourself. You're just lazy. But you can't do it. Because when it comes to righteousness before God, you have to be perfect. And I gotta tell you, in sin did your mother conceive you. The deck was stacked against you before you had conscious thoughts. You'd already died. You're already lost. This is the depth of sin. Paul was an outwardly righteous man, zealous for the Lord. And yet he was far from God. Because zealousness doesn't save us. This is, I, I said this last Sunday in the sermon. The ten commandments don't make a Christian. It's faith in Christ that makes a Christian. There's lots of people that fear God, but they don't love him, they don't trust him.
I had a coworker that he was Catholic and he just decided he wasn't doing it anymore, didn't believe anymore. And he said, if you're not that understanding and loving and forgiving, when I get up there, because I said, you're gonna have to stand before the throne. And he said, oh, you'll forgive me, didn't you, because I'm a good person?
But I mean, this is, this is, if you read Luther's personal accounts, when he's a monk, he hates God. When, when he's a priest. Because God is always angry. God is only angry. When he starts writing against indulgences, which eventually leads him to rediscovering, we are saved by grace through faith and this is not our own doing, but it is the work of God. He finally understands what the love of God means. And, and, and God goes from being an angry God to being a loving God. And he stops hating God. Because if God is just an angry taskmaster, that just demands you keep on doing stuff that you can't do. I mean, imagine your boss. And every time you turn in a report, every time you do the job, it's wrong and you gotta do it again. But it's to the perfect specifications, nope, do it again. Every single day. Would you like that boss? Would you be looking for a new job? Absolutely, yeah. Imagine a marriage. Or whatever you, no matter what you do, everything's wrong. Is that a happy, healthy marriage? Or is that a marriage in need of serious marriage counseling? So it's not our works that get us into heaven, but it's the mercy of God. And so these, this, these scales fall from Paul's eyes and he's filled with the Holy Spirit and he is baptized. So baptism is for men and women. Baptism is for those who are whole and those who have been marred. Baptism is even for those who killed in the name of God, killed Christians, spilled blood, persecuted God. Baptism is for them as well. There is nothing to bar anybody from being baptized and receiving the grace of God. And that's where we gotta end. Welcome, we're ending class. Figured this is a good place.
No ways to go.
Yeah, there's some coffee back there. I don't know if there's any donuts left, but, but welcome. I'm Pastor Rod, so. I'm gonna, we're streaming, I'm gonna stop the stream, I'll come over, talk with you and, and welcome you, alright, but.